Okay. Welcome to work session of April 23rd, 2012. We've got three items on the agenda. The first is a discussion of proposal by Moses and Greenwood, considered by the Planning Commission, get city council up to speed on exactly what's being presented. The second is a joint work session with the school board. That's why the empty chairs here. And then third will be a discussion of the city budget. So I guess we'll start with item one, Randy.
Mr. Mayor, the purpose of the first work session is to provide a summary explanation to the council and also to the public of an item that will be coming to your next meeting, the one after this one, for public hearing. It is a series of comprehensive plan amendments, rezonings, and conditional use permits associated with development on several parcels, but in one way, I think it's a single project. Mr. Wine, who wrote the staff report for the Planning Commission, will summarize that. It is a copy of which is in your package. Kevin?
For your presentation, this is the presentation I gave last week to Planning Commission. Ultimately, it's four separate land use applications. The first three are directly related and dependent on each other. The first being a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation for three parcels on Alpha Street from a split land use designation to solely Village Commercial. Here's a citywide zoning map. The arrow points to the approximate location of these parcels. Two whole parcels fronting on Alpha Street and then a third portion behind that. Presently, they are designated for general commercial. Well, three quarters of the properties zoned designated for general commercial with a quarter of it being designated for Village Commercial already. Here's a close-up of the properties. They're directly, they're immediately behind Langley Federal Credit Union, approximately 250 feet from With Creek Road. The property in its entirety has frontage on Alpha Street, directly across the street from Picos and Common Shopping Center where Food Line is located, sandwiched in between Langley Federal and EDA-owned property that houses the regional stormwater management pond. Here's a citywide future land use map. I'll zoom in here. These are the properties outlined in yellow, the tax parcels. And you can see where it's split right now. The gray area being Village Commercial, general commercial being that purple area. Applicants, in this case, want to completely make this Village Commercial for future land use designation, and the next application's dependent on this one. In summary, the applicants wish to redesignate the property solely to Village Commercial for land use purposes. It's presently designated as general commercial and some Village Commercial. The property's located within a transition area and approximately 250 feet from With Creek Road. Last week at the Planning Commission meeting, they unanimously recommended this application for approval with a 6-0 vote. For this application, I can answer any questions, if you have any.
Kevin, why don't you roll through each one?
Roll through all of them? Okay.
Because so many of the questions are dependent upon what you're going to do next.
Each other. Absolutely. Like I said, in order to get to this application, approval of the first one's necessary in order to justify it. This is a rezoning request for those properties. Presently, they are zoned, two of the parcels are zoned general commercial, and the other is zoned B2, commercial office. And once again, here's the aerial map of the property, the exact same map as in that first slideshow. Here's the zoning designations of the property. You can see tax parcels 10-4A and 10-4 zoned general commercial, and the portion of 10-3 is zoned B2. And directly behind them, adjacent, is Village Commercial-y-zoned property. They wish, the applicants wish to rezone all these properties on Alpha Street to Village Commercial, presently zoned general commercial and B2. Same justification for the first application. 250 feet off of With Creek Road and lends itself more to Village Commercial use as opposed to a general commercial or a B2 use. Once again, as with that first application, Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval of this one as well. And lastly, with, in regards to these parcels, this is the third and last application for those. In order to get to this request for a conditional use permit, the property has to be rezoned to Village Commercial. And they're wishing, the conditional use permit kicks in because they're requesting to build a mixed-use building that would consist of residential uses on the third floor. You may remember back in September, we reintroduced the residential concept to the Village Commercial District. And by right, developer can have residential uses on the second floor of a development. However, once they request a, that the third floor be used for residential purposes, a conditional use permit would kick in. So that's why they're requesting this conditional use permit. It's the same properties, approximately 1.9 acres on Alpha Street, directly behind Langley Federal Credit Union and George's Restaurant. This is their very stripped-down kind of site plan at this stage, very early proposal. This is, they're actually asking for four buildings at this time. We're not sure if it will yield that many. It's just to avert having to come back before you all and ask for an additional building if it will yield that many. But they would, they would consist of four residential units, two on the second floor, two on the third floor, and two commercial businesses on the bottom floor, the main floor. Each floor would be approximately 2,600 square feet. This is a stony run in Newport News, some pictures of this development, and this is what they aspire this development to be like, to kind of look like. Very town-villagey feel with residential on the second and third floors and the main floor consisting of commercial uses. Staff is recommending approval with conditions, as Planning Commission also recommended approval with these conditions. First being the approval of Architectural Review Board for all the buildings, including the residential components, prior to the site plan approval. Second being the requirement that all utilities be placed underground. Third, we would prohibit exterior recreational display or storage areas. Fourth, if the project is not constructed and fully operational within five years of the issuance of this permit, the conditional use permit shall become null and void. Fifth, the conditional use permit is for the establishment of residential uses on the third floor. If at any time at least a portion of the third floor of each of the proposed structures is not utilized for residential purposes, the conditional use permit shall become null and void. Sixth, the development shall not yield any more than eight and a half dwelling units per acre, and that would be the average that they are proposing right now with four buildings. Seven, any development of the subject parcels that occurs in conjunction with any development of the parcel immediately adjacent to the west, which is owned by the EDA, shall require a shared entrance off of Alpha Street. And lastly, all large shared trash containers shall not be visible from the public right-of-ways and shall be screened in accordance with city site plan and zoning ordinance requirements. And lastly, this is for separate property immediately to the west. It's currently owned by the City Economic Development Authority and houses the regional stormwater management pond. It is immediately adjacent to the west, and they're proposing a similar structure, but just one on this parcel, which would be approximately 0.89 acres at this time. Here's a little site plan mock-up. Immediate access off of Alpha Street. Very similar proposal. It would be directly linked to the parcels to the east. And once again, this application for a conditional use permit is for the third floor of residential. I say third floor. It would only be two floors of residential. The main floor would be commercial, the second floor would be residential, and the third floor would be residential. The conditional use permit kicks in at that third, second floor residential, the third floor. I'm not going to read all the conditions there. Most of them are the same. There would be one more, and this would be that the developer would be required to provide improvements to Alpha Street on the portion fronting the parcel, so that they would be required to finish Alpha Street at the end of their property line. So any questions on these proposals? I will-
Yeah.
Answer. Yes. But I guess we'll go this way. So, all right. Councilman Green?
I apologize. This is probably a stupid question, but sometimes my elevator doesn't quite get to the top. I don't quite understand what you're trying to say in condition number five.
Okay.
Are you saying that there have to be people living there, or does it just have to be built to have people live there?
If, we understand that in the future, economic, the market may change, and they may not, it may not be the best use for that. So if at any time, at least a portion of that floor is not used for residential purposes, say they want to convert it all to office and there's, there are no more apartments on that, on that floor, they would have to come back and get another conditional use permit.
Okay.
That's the intention of that condition.
I had the same question, but just for a little further clarification. If the unit was designed and intended for residential use but was vacant, does that satisfy that requirement?
I think for our intentions and purposes, yes. Until it's no longer occupied as such, well, if offices come in and annihilate that use.
I understand that.
Okay.
It has physically occupied by-
If they're marketing it as such, then we're fine. And of course, building codes would kick in as well and make, say they were to be converted to offices, that's something they would get into additionally.
Did you have more?
No, that's it.
I had a couple of questions then. Regarding traffic, it mentions that, you know, possibly 128 new vehicle trips per day and that that should be fine, but if it was not, the zoning ordinance stipulates that any traffic impacts shall be mitigated by the developer. My question is, how long do we as a city have to wait for the traffic to pick up? Because I can imagine it's not going to be lots of traffic initially. It might take a year or two for things to get filled up.
Absolutely. And that's something we can stipulate during the site plan process. We'll look at closer what these uses will be. They, retail is what they wish to have on those first floors. However, office is also completely okay. So we couldn't get into the numbers of what the conditional, what the commercial uses would perhaps have. So once we get to the site plan process, we'll look at that a little closer. And we can note, and Debbie, you can elaborate on this, Ellen's not here, but we can stipulate or make a note on that site plan. Any unforeseen traffic issues shall be mitigated by them, and that, of course, it would be-
Or vary it up to five years.
For a period of up to five years or something of that nature, of course.
Okay. And then I had a question about the BMPs. I didn't see any mention of, or the retention pond, about expansion of the retention pond. Are they just going to, or I don't see any BMPs on the property. Does that simply have to wait until they get more of a site plan?
They're going to feed into that regional stormwater pond.
Is that able to-
Yes. Right now, it is my understanding, the city engineers told me, it will handle approximately 14 acres of developed land. Right now, it's serving zero acres of developed land. So they will, of course, come to an agreement with the EDA who owns it, buy into it, and of course, pay an annual lease on it.
And then finally, about parking, I recall when we were passing, I suppose it was the comp plan, anytime there's a shopping center or commercial area, there's a required number of parking spaces. How does the number of parking spaces that they anticipate fit into that within a Village Commercial?
A Village-
Have we set that number already?
Village Commercial's a little more lenient. If they develop these parcels together, they'll be able to share parking. Off the top of my head, and Debbie's more familiar with the parking requirements in the Village Commercial, but they're much less stringent than in a B1 or B2 area.
But we do have numbers on that, on Village Commercial parking spaces?
Yeah, and it's use-dependent.
Debbie, you want to try this?
Do you understand my question?
I think I do. It's actually controlled by the site owner. And retail use requires one parking space for every 200 square feet of store area, yeah, retail store area.
Right.
So they're going to have to divide parking for the retail use as well as for the residential.
Yes.
The residential use is controlled by the R3 zoning district, which basically requires two parking spaces per unit, with one additional space per five units for-
Yes, right.
Now, in the Village Commercial District, where it becomes more lenient, is that if we find that the amount of parking that's controlled by those two ordinances is not needed at the onset of the development, the applicants can come forward to the city council and request a reduction of that amount at the onset of the development, but the actual area of parking space used to be provided will be served on the side for its future extension.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
One of your presentations, Kevin, you mentioned one, the properties did not have direct access to With Creek Road?
Yeah, the portion of, I believe that's 10-3.
I think it was the second one you presented. How are they going to handle that as far as getting that parcel out onto the main fair?
We're treating it, they're going to vacate the property lines, and we're treating it as one, 1.9 acre property. So that's going to be down the road. Well, before they develop the property, they're going to give us a boundary line adjustment and vacate those property lines. So it will have direct access at that point.
And the second question, the BMP currently, is that surrounded by a fence?
I don't believe it is. No, no, it's not.
Wouldn't with apartments going in, in there, you'd want to have that as a condition? Or, you know, to have that area surrounded by a fence of some sort for protection?
Absolutely. That's, that's something we haven't thought about at the staff level. So that's certainly a condition that can be imposed.
Well, I think the goal too is, what's going to happen is the BMP is going to be split from the developed portion that will be sold by the IDA to the developer. And then the portion that the city is going to maintain, they will essentially create like a park-type setting around that BMP to include a walking trail. But it is a valid point about the fence, because we are imposing fences on BMPs at this point on Friday.
I remember years ago, Debbie, when the Hunt Stores unit went in, and they were required to put up, you know, have a BMP there and put, you know, around a BMP, a fence. And at the same time, the city should have probably done the same thing on the BMP, you know, by Food Line, and we didn't do it. So I'm just saying now, it's probably, you know, a good time to do it for, you know, everybody.
Certainly an very valid point that we will look into before it comes before you make your claim.
Yeah.
Kevin, under your potential condition-
Yes, sir.
That at number five, that says that if at any time at least a portion of the third floor, might be better to say if at any time, any portion of the third floor-
Okay.
You know, what you are saying, any portion of the third floor of each of the units is not utilized for residential purposes, the condition use permit shall be null and void.
Okay.
You could say any portion or a portion. At least A doesn't quite-
Okay. Okay. Remove at least.
All right. Bud, did you have a question?
Yes, I have two. The first one is, right now, the property is zoned commercial and Village Commercial, and I wonder what the advantage is of just changing it to Village Commercial period. I don't understand the distinction between having to make that change. And the other one is, on your condition use number six, where it talks about the establishment of residential uses on the third floor, does that assume that the second floor can already be used for residential?
That's a by-right use, yes, sir. And for the first comment, that, you're speaking of the land use designations-
Yes.
-which are separate from the rezoning. The rezoning's dependent on the land use designation, but right now, they're, it's split zoned, but they're, it's that, it's a quarter of it is Village Commercial right now, and that has no effect on the other three quarters, which is designated as general commercial. It's not a mix. It's not one or the other. It's very land-specific, which is, I know, confusing. We were confused.
So the entire property is not designated both?
No, no. No, the entire property is not both. They're trying-
My impression was the entire property was designated both. Why change it to one? Okay? So I understand the difference now.
Okay.
Yeah. Carrie? I think the only comment that I've got, and this is more of a comment, is that it should be our intention that this development start with its services being delivered to the BMP for stormwater, to the city BMP. And are we prepared, from a fee structure and the like, to make that happen? In other words, this would be the first use, potential use of the city's BMP, being the main pond. And we have some footwork to do to understand what that would take for the developer to tie into that, right? As far as, you know, participation, unless we have something that I'm just unfamiliar with.
Actually, staff has already been working on that with the EDA.
Okay.
And the EDA is working, is going through the negotiations with the developer in the sale of the property. So we have a fairly good handle as to what would be a reasonable cost, or cost to maintain-
Now, the city council have to act on that whatsoever to make that an ordinance, or is that just a policy?
It's, the property is owned by the EDA, and they have the ability, independent of the city council, to enter into contracts with the developer.
Okay. Do, can our conditions require that the city BMP be what is used? In other words, I'd hate to see that BMP sitting there and then have 15 more little ponds on the property.
You talk about the Moses Greenwood buying into the BMP. Wasn't it the intent when the BMP was formed years ago, that Food Line and places in that shopping center would also buy into the BMP?
Well, that they would, that they would participate, and when they do another development, it was going to be our insistence that they connect to it. And all I'm saying is, right now, we have this nice pond that's sitting there. It's ready to go in service. It can pay dividends to the city from a TMDL standpoint, as well as limiting the number of small ponds throughout the city. I just want to make sure that our language is clear and starts to make requirements where lawfully, you know, I don't want to say you must do this, but obviously, we want to encourage that. Sounds like city staff is doing just that. But all the tools in place to make that a reality, because this would be the first use of that city BMP besides a pond, which it is right now. It's not a retention pond yet. It's not retaining anything except for its natural water. And I just want to make sure that we're going to do that. And anything that the developer is planning on doing with beautification of the pond, rather because of his desire to have attractive housing units, if there's fountains being discussed or anything like that, we need to make sure that the cost of those is captured in the conditions, I would think. Okay? So I mean, if there's a discussion about putting fountains in that pond, I'm all for it. I think it'd be gorgeous or whatever, but we need to make sure that it's covered up front in the conditions. That's my only comment. Other than that, it sounds like we've got a piece of property that should have always been zoned Village Commercial, that's zoned General Commercial right now, because it's well off, it's well off With Creek Road.
We're not sure how, actually, the city's courts and designations-
I was wondering that myself.
But I appreciate you coming back.
Okay. Anything else?
Members of council, this will be back before you for public hearing in two weeks. And if you have questions between now and then, please direct them to Debbie, and we'll get you the best answers that we can.
And our next, next meeting is with the school board, which they are supposed to be here. There they are.
I know, there they are.
We're ready. Come right on. How you doing? Good. How you doing?
Anywhere where. Me and Meyer is just as disgraceful as it.
Oh, it's my pleasure. At least I'm crushing.
Now, you look like you're walking home pretty good.
Mr. Chairman, we have our sheets for everybody.
Oh, there's one over there. I'm sorry.
One right here. We're into item two on the city's, city council's work session, which is a joint work session with the school board to discuss the budget. And let me start off by, again, thanking the school board for an excellent job that they have done in the budget to date. I've seen, I think all of council has reviewed your adopted budget. We know how, we know how hard the school board has worked to maintain quality schools in challenging economic times, and we recognize that we have a share of that to do from the, from the city's standpoint, to make up for some of the shortcomings. I know that the information has been available for some time about the shortcomings of the state. I guess what we'd kind of like to hear from y'all, because a lot of things have been happening in the state budget, is I think what would be a good starting point is if you go through where you are based on the state's current budget scenario. What's changed since the last time we just, we talked? That'd be great.
Certainly. The, and so this is since the General Assembly did its work last week. We have found that we will be getting approximately $90,000 additional dollars over what the governor's budget, which is the budget that we had discussed with you previously. So with that $90,000, what I'll be bringing forward to the board at their May meeting is to use approximately half of that money to pull out some of the jobs bill money, the one-time money that we had to put in, and then the other half of that to put one more teacher position back in. The budget that the school board approved and forwarded to you has nine teaching positions being cut, two and a half support positions. Fortunately, this year, as you know, we were able to do that without layoffs, which is the first time in the last four years we've been able to do that. So that would give us another teaching position and get some of that one-time money out, because we are concerned next year, we are anticipating cuts again next year. So we want as few of those one-time federal funds in the budget, because we'll only have to turn around and cut them out the following year, and we're trying to avoid as much of that as possible.
I guess, I guess the one thing that we can follow up from what you said, how does that affect the student-teacher ratio within the school system?
Well, we're anticipating that we can't say across each grade level what that's going to mean for class size, because it's very much like putting a puzzle together. We'll see some classes that we will anticipate will probably increase by a couple of students. At the secondary level, what we may see is courses that may have been offered, let's say, three times a day, might only be offered twice a day, and those classes will be a little larger. So as we put staffing together, once our budget is finalized, we'll look to see. But with us being so small, it's hard to say at this grade level, student-teacher ratio is exactly this. It really will depend somewhat. But as I've said, and I know board members have said to the community, when you're making these kinds of cuts, $4.5 million in four years, we are impacting our instructional program, because we've just seen so much cutting from the state in the last four years. cutting from the state in the last four years.
Anything, Randy? All right, so I guess we'll open the floor, and the school board like to make any, you know, basically ask anything of council or make a general statement. And if not, then I'll open up the floor for questions and comments.
Well, I certainly would like to.
Hold on one second. Let's get you a microphone.
Okay.
Cast the mic. Yeah, we're all challenged.
I would just like to thank council for your, your just continued support. I think you feel our pain. You're kind of in there with us, a similar situation, but still able to come through and support us, and that means a lot. And, and you have, you have continued to be supportive throughout all these budget cuts. And like Dr. Parrish said, it's not done yet. But I don't know, I just like, I like our working relationship, and I really appreciate y'all's support an awful lot. And also, Dr. Parrish and her staff, like you mentioned earlier, have done a phenomenal job with the budget, and, and cutting as, as little as possible. It's just been very surgical in their approach about what they're taking out. And, and they're very frugal with the finances that we do have. And we have had minimal impact to instruction to this point, and it's due to their hard works.
Questions or comments of council and towards the school board? So why don't we just go around the table? Buddy, you want to start?
I just.
You're a happy man.
I just, I take my hat off to Dr. Parrish and the board, because I, I know what you're going through, and we appreciate all the cuts you've had to make. And I'm sure that this whole council is searching for dollars to give to you, and it'll continue that way.
I agree with that. I did have one question. I had my first experience this year with, with my son, my oldest son, taking an online course at the high school. And it, he was very successful in it, and went at his own pace. And it seemed to me that that might be one way that we could continue to offer some classes, even though we've reduced teachers. Have we appropriated any particular funding for that?
We actually are, are doing more of that. We're using the Virtual Virginia, which is offered through the state of Virginia, and we're able to access that at no cost. We've also, matter of fact, we have a course that we have started with ECPI, so it enables us to offer a course to our students, and they do that virtually, and then take some field trips to ECPI. We have this year done research and attached ourselves to an RFP that was put out by all the school divisions of region for some online programs, and we've had a few students test the waters in that this year. So what I anticipate is in the coming year, we're going to see more and more of that as we continue to use it, because you're absolutely right. It's a way for us, being small too, to offer the same courses that are offered in larger divisions, especially on this tight budget. So I'm glad to hear that you're somewhat successful with it.
He really liked it. So thank you for your creativity and willingness to, to try new things.
All right.
I have two questions, one question, I guess, really, and then a comment. The question is about school buses. What is the current status of the fleet? And are there plans, are there any more used ones from York County?
You're looking at me, so I'll go ahead and take this one, too. We have, through stimulus money, been able to purchase a couple of new buses, and we're hoping maybe to squeeze one more out of the remaining stimulus money. We have, as you know, have purchased used buses through York County, as well as other school divisions, so we continue to do that. The state code did change, or as part of the budget, general assembly's work a year ago, actually said that now school buses, instead of being replaced, I believe it's every 12 years, could go to 15 years. So you have other school divisions holding their buses a little bit longer. So we haven't quite seen them going out on the market that we want to purchase, but we'll continue to work through that, you know, in the coming years. And if there are good used buses out there, we will purchase them. But we, we have been successful with some of that stimulus money. It's helped ease it a little bit, but we still have, as you know, older buses running on the, running on the roads.
With the decrease in enrollment, have we been, you know, are capable of, you know, retiring any of the, you know, the school buses?
We have done that. And two years ago, we really did, as you may remember, a big budget cut in the area of transportation, and we streamlined it by taking away the number of bus stops we had. And we pulled buses out of the fleet when we did that, which was, was very helpful. So if enrollment does continue to decrease, and we can continue to streamline it and eliminate bus runs, we, you know, we will do that. And that may help us pull, you know, another bus or two off the fleet. But we haven't been able to do that since two years ago, when we made those deep cuts.
The last thing is, is a comment that I, I went to a girls' softball game last week, and the varsity softball field is probably one of the worst in the district. And hopefully that sometime this year, this year, that we as a city can do something to improve it. It would help other organizations improve their facilities, but the girls' field, you know, Bradshaw Field is just in terrible shape. I mean, it really needs a lot of work on it. So it's something that I guess, you know, we, you know, we should look at in the future.
Okay. We'll take a look at that, and I think we'll look at that all together. How's that? Okay.
One of the, one of the things that I know has had the greatest impact on the budget was, I think, a virtually unprecedented jump in the composite index. And hopefully, since the data is two years old, that really reflects the state overall economic status, which was a drop in Northern Virginia. And now it's gone back up, but they're benefiting from it because the fact that the data is two years. But hopefully, in another two years, we'll get back to a more reasonable composite index. The other question I wanted to ask, did, did we have any significant elimination or major reduction in basic instructional programs?
We did eliminate one program, materials and processing at the high school. We do offer similar programs through our New Horizons regional programs. Our students will still be able to access those. But that was the only actual program elimination this year. And so again, with all the work that we did on the budget, while we would like to eliminate nothing, we felt like that was, that was pretty good for us with the, the kind of cuts we made.
And the reduction in New Horizons cost was due to some special ed program?
Yes. Special education really drove that. We had fewer students moving into some of those programs, and that gave us a reduction there, which was, as you can see, very helpful for us this year.
Thank you.
And no questions, but just a comment. A second, what Buddy said, to thank Jennifer and all the school board for your excellent work in these very hard times of economic difficulties. I think you've done an excellent job, and thank you very much for your work.
Hey, let's keep coming around. So each member of the school board and all council have things.
Okay. I would just like to say that I thank you for your support, as usual. But in reference to the bus replacement and the softball field, as you know, our track also is very old, and, and I don't think we can, we're not set up to hold certain-sized meats at it and all. So I just would like to say, we do have a CIP now, and we really appreciate any help you can give us on that. Our facilities, as you know, the middle school is aging, is, we have a wonderful new elementary school, but all the other schools, you know, roof replacements and HVAC replacements, and, and our CIP is full. And any, any support in that would be very much appreciated.
I'd like to thank the council for the excellent support we received from you. There's another group that's not here at the table tonight, and that's our teachers. Our teachers do an amazing amount of hard work for us. I've been reminded by members of the community, we need to thank our teachers at every last time that we can, and this is a good opportunity to do that. Our schools would not be this strong without those teachers doing the hard work that they do each day. I'm not going to say it's thankless, but we need to thank them more often. So, but I do appreciate your excellent support.
And as a new member of the school board, I wasn't looking forward to this budget process, but I want to tell you how pleasant it was. And in my other job, I experienced councils and school boards working together, and it's not always this harmonious. So you don't know how much I appreciate that, and for you making our children and our schools one of your priorities, when I know you have a lot to balance. And I commend the, the council and the city manager for the creative way that y'all went about putting together your budget. Thank you very much. And we talked a lot about some CIP items, school buses, fields, and all that. And I know Jennifer, at a couple of meetings that we have had, we've been trying to creatively go out and find some other funds that can help us support some of our athletic activities, like the tennis courts and other things. So I want you to know that the city staff and your school board's out trying to find other ways to do that. And I've participated in a few of those myself.
Thank you. Karen?
I'll just say, or continue to say what's been said about, first of all, the wonderful relationship that's being maintained. And that's just kind of amazing to me. I've seen a lot of what you were talking about, some hate and discontent, which we just don't have here. And I think that's just super. And secondly, people tell me things about, good things about our schools nearly every day. So they're doing a fine job.
Just like to say, you know, Pecoson's a very unique city. And I think part of that is the, the rich heritage we have in a lot of areas, and education being a prime one. That's one of the things that definitely brought me to Pecoson, that and that I married a Pecosner. But allowed me to come back in with good graces. But, and, you know, with the way the state is running away from supporting public education, I don't envy council's job of trying to pick up the slack where the state was dropped off. But I do appreciate the working relationship where it's, it's a community effort. It's not the schools against any other group, or any group against the schools. We've got such great support from the city and from the organizations like the Kiwanis and the BDF and all these other areas, groups that are, are supporting the schools. It's truly, you can see it in all aspects of Pecoson, that it's a community effort. And I think it goes the other way. The school supports the community in so many ways. So it's, it's great that we have the relationship we have, but it shouldn't be a surprise, because the two are so closely integrated. They should stay that way.
I agree. Dave? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. I expect y'all are aware that the school board just had our first meeting with the state school accreditation team. I was fortunate enough to be paired with, with Mr. Diggs. And one of the, the features that we emphasize as a cornerstone of the success of our school system and the community is the mutual, mutually supportive, respectful, and cordial relationship that we share. The, the two are intertwined, and we are most appreciative of the support that the city provides, and that is well documented with the state accreditation team. Thank you.
I'll reiterate what you said. I was in a totally separate interview, and the gentleman commented on, on how frequently he had already heard about the relationship between the school board, Dr. Parrish, her staff, and city council. And my comment to him was that it almost seems like we have a very united front. We have a common vision, and we're all marching towards that vision. So no matter how tough things get, we're kind of in it together, and we can pull together and say, that's okay, you know, we're going to make, make it through this, and we're going to make it work. And that's just, that's just how I feel, and I conveyed that to the state as well.
Okay. Well, as, as y'all know, we're, we're approaching the end of our budget session. What we will tell you is that we will continue to look for opportunities, and please continue to ask for where you see small things that the city can do. I would tell you, all of you, thank you for your service on the school board. We really appreciate that, especially in times such as these, where the challenges are very, very high. I also want to thank the, those civic associations that are, join us as a great city, whether they're the Kiwanis Club, the Lions Club, I know that, or the Education Foundation. All of them are trying to make up for the gaps. And we're approaching the business community as well, looking for any help in filling the schools' gaps. So no $1,000 item is too small to ask for assistance. If we can go out and barter it across many of those groups, we will certainly help facilitate that. I'll tell you that the reason that you are where you are is not because of this, this council, but because of the way that y'all have handled your own finances. My hat is off to you also on that, in the fact that you've used the federal jobs money for exactly what it was meant to do. And you've used it over a period of time, instead of just jumping on and saying, you know what, we need this in this year's budget, and let's go on. You took a longer-term approach to it, and a lot of the credit goes to the school board themselves, in the way that you managed the assets that you had, for being able to come up with a budget that works for us. And though isn't everything that we'd hoped for, for the schools, it works for the schools. So make sure that you appreciate what you've done for yourselves. Council will, will be right behind you. When the state backs out of funding an initiative or whatever, we'll do what we can. But a lot of the credit goes to yourselves, and we appreciate that. And with that, I think, unless somebody's got something else, I think the school board can.
Just to thank Scott Diggs for all his work on the school board. He was here when they were doing the elementary school and had a big, big role in that. He served as vice chair, chair, and a school board member. So I'm sure we're going to miss seeing you across from us, and your school board friends are going to miss having you on the board with them, Scott.
But we know where, we know where you live. So thanks a lot. And unless y'all really want to sit here and listen to our woes, you can go. But we're getting ready to go through our budget now. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we're to the third item on the agenda, which is a discussion of the city budget for fiscal year 2013. And Randy, how would you like to proceed? Straight with, I know you've got a sub-bullet here for Davenport, or, just open the floor. You take it.
Thank you. What I would suggest is just to quickly frame the purpose of the work session this evening. From the staff perspective, we want to tell you, members of council, what's changed since the budget, recommended budget went to bed. The budget is a living document, and you have in your package. Those changes, we'll go over them briefly, and a couple of other related items. But I thought it would be appropriate to ask Mr. Rose, who is here from Davenport, our financial advisors, to talk with you a little bit about our most recent bond rating. The news is, I think, very, very good. I think it, as he will say, your leadership as a council and school boards as well, through this recession, has positioned us not only to hold our own, but actually to advance significantly in terms of the credit markets. And with that, I'll let David talk, and I doubt he'll miss anything, but if he does, I'll, I'll clean up on the back end. David?
Randy, I've got some hard copies as well, so.
You want to talk from up there?
The council has your presentation in their package.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And we'll try not to be too long. There's an old saying, when you're explaining, you're losing. And we don't have a whole lot of explaining to do, because of what has transpired over the last several weeks. With that being said, again, my colleague Kyle Laux has been in front of you before. I've taken some good ribbing. I'm here alone. He, he could not make it tonight, but he said, go ahead, try your best. So I will do that. But having said all that, we really do appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you. A little bit of background, because of course you have a whole lot of things on your plate, as evidenced by this evening. As you recall, back in February 13th, to be exact, we had the opportunity to be in front of council and talk about the budget and some refunding strategies. And in that budget presentation, we talked about doing a refunding, refinancing, and restructuring, which would include both the general fund and the utility. restructuring, which would include both the general fund and the utility enterprise fund, a sewer to be specific, and it was about a $17 million issue that we went over. We also talked about that in the greater context of the overall budget and being sure that all of the various key funds are in structural balance over the next several years. And then finally, we have a timetable to put all that together. On the next page, here on page two, back on March 29th, we went to visit with the national credit rating agencies, specifically the two large ones, Moody's and Standard and Poor's. We did that with the mayor, the city manager, and the finance director. And as a result of that, as you can see in the middle point, we received extraordinarily high credit ratings. And I use that word extraordinary or extraordinarily very carefully, but you're going to see in a moment where we are. We had hoped to be a strong A, perhaps a weak double A from the two rating agencies, but we ended up being a whole lot better than that. I'm going to go over that and what that all means with regard to our moving forward with the plan of finance and what we expect over the next few weeks. With that being said, on page three, we wanted you to see, when we talk about the ratings that we received, how they are in context to the overall world of credit ratings. So let me start by showing you what you see here. And that is, there are in effect 10 distinct tiers of credit ratings. The top tier is the vaunted triple A by either Moody's or S&amp;P. Now, lest you think we didn't know how to type, the Moody's folks actually do a large A and then small double As, that's just the way they do it. S&amp;P does large As and continues that strength. So what you see there is the triple A is in effect the gold standard. Let me give you some perspective. With the exception of Charlottesville, there are essentially no triple A cities in Virginia that have populations under 100,000. So on top of that, there are really only a couple of cities that have triple A ratings, one of those being the city of Alexandria, which's population is above 100,000. What we ended up getting here, we meaning the city of Pecosin, out of the box, meaning first-time ratings, was Moody's put us at that double A category, the low end, double A3, but S&amp;P put us at the very top of the double A category, double A plus. Now, I will tell you, we were hoping for ratings that would be in the third tier, A1 or A+. We were saying perhaps we might get fortunate and have one of the two be in the double A category at the very bottom, but we certainly didn't expect both of them to be at double A, and certainly did not expect them to be with S&amp;P at the highest of the double A. So we really feel good about that. There's a lot of things that the rating agencies said, and I'm going to show you some of the exact compliments and comments they made, because again, all this ties back to the way the city is being managed, thanks to your leadership, thanks to working collectively with the, with the city staff. So you may ask yourself then on page four, what exactly do the rating agencies view their ratings, or what do they base their ratings on? And there are four major criteria that you can see up there. The first criteria, not necessarily in this order, but the first criteria we've listed is demographics slash the economy. That's also the criteria that you really have the least impact on in a short term. Again, your demographics are what they are, they come over many years, the economy, and part of that is nationally driven, regionally driven, and then some of the policies that you make that you can influence. The last three, though, you have a much greater influence, that is finances, meaning your budget and the way you approach the budget, the way you work with folks like the school board. The second thing there is debt, the levels of debt, what you choose to do, the way you would choose to borrow money, that's a second component there. And then the third component that you have control over is management, how steady it is, the decisions that you make, the decisions that you make with each other. And so again, the strength of management is something that they place a high premium on. So what we have then is those four criteria, and what I'd like to do in the next couple of moments is to let you see the various comments the rating agencies made about those four components. And here on the first page is that first component, the demographics and the economy. A number of things that you could see both Moody's and Standard and Poor's had, we tried to cull out what we thought would be really the most pertinent to the various councils and to the citizens. As you could see, the Moody's comment there, they expect that tax base to be relatively stable, and they see a number of economic development initiatives, as well as where you're located, to be very positive. For those of you, again, I glossed over this, but the mayor and the staff spent a great deal of time talking about the overall economics, the demographics, and one of the things that we did was show them the video that lasts about five minutes, as well as the things that had occurred and is occurring with your interaction with the various critical stakeholders. The brochure that you had, I should have brought it here, but you all know what I'm talking about, was very well received. I mean, it put the city in a wonderful light, and rightly so. So it's those kinds of things that they realize the city is part of a very exciting evolution in spite of what's been now five years or so of a difficult national economic environment. Standard and Poor's had a number of things that, again, over time, you highlighted your affluent residential property tax base, again, how you look relative to your neighbors in Hampton Roads. You are really, from their perspective, as well as Williamsburg, the two anchors of the overall greater Hampton Roads when it comes to where people want to live, the educational elements that they get here, that was very, very clear, and all of that was talked about at length. So again, kudos to both the schools and the overall city management, couldn't have looked any better. And again, some of the other comments there by Standard and Poor's, you can see, I don't have to sort of reiterate. But that was the first section. Then the second section is finances, and this is one that in the budget time, you're going to see a whole lot of positives being said, but I do think it's important to let you realize, again, which you know, you go to that very last comment by Moody's, and they say here, and I'll quote, "While the city's 2013 budget has not been finalized, the city was originally faced with a roughly $2.2 million budget gap due to proposed cigarette meal tax increases, as well as implementation of other fees, the things that were being done, the city has been able to reduce that gap down to about $800,000." I think the important thing here is that the plan of finance further helps to make all of that work, but you're just going to have to be vigilant and realize that every time dollars are spent over and above what's planned, that's going to hurt for next year and subsequent years. So we just want to put a cautionary note onto all the positives, that as you move towards the end of the budget cycle here, that again, it's not as if, and I think you all know this, that there's a lot of free and extra dollars around, to the contrary, we're really working with very tight dollars. Having said that, you go to the very top, and Standard and Poor's talked about how you've had for the past five years, you've had structurally sound budgets, you've had surpluses, all of which has allowed you to be in the position to get strong ratings, to be where you are today. But again, what we really do need to see, we collectively in all of Virginia, as well as Hampton Roads, and of course here in Pecosin, is a more, you know, sort of, what do you always call it, a more robust national economy to help rise the tide of all the boats. The third category is debt, and I think it's important here to point out that you are well-positioned. We showed the rating agencies what your debt levels were, what your plans were, what you've already done, and you can see the quotes here. Low to moderate debt levels with manageable additional capital needs that will comply with the city's formal debt management policies. Very important to point out, we were able to show that both on the finance side and your fund balance levels, as well as on your debt existing and proposed, you meet all of your policies. Again, your city manager has put in a plan, all of those policies are met. The mayor, I think it's fair to say, told the folks in New York, we will continue to meet our policies that has been created by city council, and that's the type of thing that they expect. And again, they see this as all being manageable, but clearly, you're on the right path, you just have to continue to stay the course. And then finally, but not least, is that fourth category, management. Let me explain on that first quote, it says, "Standard and Poor's considers Pecosin's financial management practices, quote unquote, 'strong' under its FMA methodology." What does that mean? FMA is financial management practices, accounting if you would. What they look at is things like, do you have financial policies? The answer is yes. Do you look at multi-year plans? The answer is yes. Do you have strong interaction with your staff, with the, with the city council? The answer is yes. Do you work collaboratively with the city schools? The answer is yes. That's what they mean when they sort of have a checklist, if you would, of your practices, and the word strong is just that. To be strong is, again, in a very good position. It's also why Standard and Poor's gave you that double A plus rating out of the bat, because again, they feel very good about the way the city is managed. And management as well means the mayor, and it means the council, and the way the mayor talked about the interactions with council, it was just a very good series of meetings. The next, Moody's, it said, "Due to prudent management, the city has been able to produce operating surpluses in four out of the past five fiscal years." The bottom line is, you've produced, you've got good results, in spite of having, as the superintendent indicated, constantly cutting by virtue of what the state has done over the last four to five years. You've dealt with that, you haven't punted, you haven't complained, you've just dealt with it, and that's what they expect. Again, what are then, on page nine, the considerations for the future to maintain or enhance these credit ratings? You can see there, Moody's has said, they're going to continue to monitor the city's ability to remain in compliance with the policies, as I mentioned, and the key here is, if reserves fall below these targets, then the long-term credit strength could be pressured. It's a nice way of saying, if you don't abide by your policies, you're going to see your credit rating drop. May not be immediately, but it will drop. What does that mean? That hurts us further when we want to do financings. We've done several refinancings with you over the last several years. We hope to be back to do some more of those things, as long as we continue to do the things we're supposed to do. Standard and Poor's, you can see their quote, "The stable outlook reflects our opinion that Pecosin will likely maintain what we consider its strong finances through balanced operations, including, in our view," this is their quote, not mine, "a strong unassigned fund balance according to the city's formal policy." And what they mean by that is that unassigned used to be called the undesignedated, and that's just simply the change of the nomenclature to meet the new pronouncement of Gatsby 54, basically the same thing. They're expecting us to continue to have that fund balance at or above where it is now our city's policy. So if you go to page 10, what do these ratings all mean for us versus the time that we were in front of you back in February? Well, I will tell you this, when we were in front of you back in February, and Kyle was here, we put a presentation together and we made some estimates that the all-in cost of the borrowing would actually be a little bit lower than 4%, slightly below 4%. That was what our estimates were. But by virtue of these credit ratings and the market being favorable, we actually see our all-in money coming to closer to 3%. Now, that's going to be, from our initial view right now, we've got to keep our fingers crossed, probably a drop in the overall debt service that we thought you'd have versus today of about $1 million. So we will see what the ultimate results are, hopefully by the end of this week. It'll take a few weeks to close, but if the markets hold steady, we actually think our total cost of money will probably come down in excess of $1 million from where we estimated back in February. Again, that's a combination of better ratings than expected and solid interest rate environment where we are today. What we will be able to do is to tell you roughly in a month or so, once the financing closes, if there are no glitches, hopefully there will not be, once it closes, we'll be able to come back and say where we were in February, where we actually were in essentially early May by the time we close, and you'll be able to see the comparison of what that is and what that means to the overall budget and the planned budget that is being put together right now. With that said, I want you to know that no matter what, of course, all of the policies that we have got set will be certainly within compliance, if not more so than they are even now. So what do we see as the schedule? On page 11, we look to sell the bonds into the markets this Thursday. That will be a locked-in rate for the entire life of the bonds, there'll be no interest rate risk, if you would. The city, folks, it's called City, actually, I still call it Citigroup, they are the lead manager, and they are the folks that were selected competitively to do this. We expect to close on or about May 7th, and would have the final results at that point. So that's really where we are. Happy to answer any questions, and again, turn it back perhaps maybe first to the mayor and the city manager if they want to make any comments.
Good, Randy.
David, I had, thank you. That was where I wanted to go. For the council and for the members of the public, could you point out where we were prior to this rate, most recent rate?
We were, when we did some regional jail work, you may recall, we had a sort of an unofficial rating that was down in the third tier category, in that sort of mid-A range is where we were. So in the case of the folks at S&amp;P, we literally have jumped three to four notches from where they had previously had you. Wasn't a fresh rating, it was based on old information, but they had both had you in that sort of, that third tier, which in itself is solid. Anything frankly, from the fourth tier up, is all called investment grade. The terms strong and very strong are not our terms, that's the rating agencies' terms. So they view you as the top of the very strong range, or in the very strong range in that category in the case of Moody's. So that's really the answer to that, Randy, in terms of how you look.
If memory serves, we went from A1 to double A3, and from A to double A+.
Right, that's exactly right. And you know, a lot of times, I will say this, rating agencies out of the box, meaning if they haven't reviewed you, tend to, if anything, probably err on the side of being a little more conservative, don't necessarily give you sort of the very top of what they could. And that, I think, is evidence, probably with Moody's, because one could argue, feeling so good about S&amp;P, they really gave the absolute top. Moody's gave a very good rating, of course, but again, it's something for us to shoot for in subsequent years. Normally, they like to keep the ratings there for about two to three years when it comes to going upward. To go downward, they can do that overnight. I mean, they could, you know, a bad budget, they can drop you like a rock, but going upward, it's normally about three years. They like to see a trend and a pattern before they go upwards. So I just put that into, into context, so we've got some things to shoot for, but certainly look very, very good.
Dave, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't say that we developed a lot of our financial policies with our partnership with Davenport and Company, and we really appreciate the financial guidance, the solid financial guidance that Davenport has provided to us over the years. I think it has paid huge dividends here at our, what I call our first true rating that I can recall on my time on council, and the marks, and what does it mean to the average citizen? I mean, to the average citizen, it means that more tax dollars will be applied to providing services than paying interest. And so that's a huge win, whether you look at it in lower taxes, or you look at it in what you get for your dollars spent. I would say that I'm thrilled, I'm glad we went to New York and told Pecosin's story, and we appreciate your help in doing that.
Well, I appreciate it. It was a whirlwind, got there in midday one day and left the next day at midday. So, you know, overnight, we... So, you know, overnight, we got to spend about five hours with these folks. Each meeting was about two and a half hours long, and we did a little prep ahead of time, but not little, we did a lot of prep, but I'm saying when we're up in New York. But it's pretty exhausting, I think you'll admit. That's sort of like 30 hours of nonstop from the time you leave Pecosin to get there and come back. And really, from the finance director, from what Teresa has done over the last several years, to working with Randy and the collaboration, and it just was very evident. And they like to see folks face to face. We oftentimes like to have them come to the local government. That's ideal. But in reality, our first thought was, we're asking for a rating. We wanted to show them how serious we took the rating, so we made that conscious decision that we would go to New York, take the time out of our schedules, especially the mayor and the staff, and this way, we kiss the ring, if you would, and let them know it's important. And I think in time, down the road, we'd like them to come to Pecosin. Again, they can't come everywhere. Obviously, they rate ready, literally, they have hundreds of ratings to do. They'd be on the road night and day. But in the future, it'd be wonderful to have them come by and see this. Now, I say "them," these are folks that have rated the various cities and counties in Virginia. They tend to concentrate in regions. Even if the folks that have been there move on, they keep a very detailed file of everything we said, everything we did, all the information. So if there's a turnover there, just like there's turnover for any number of folks, they look back and see the notes and what was said and what we promised and whether or not we delivered on those promises. So they are going to expect that, they've given us these ratings with the expectation that your budget will be done accordingly to what the mayor and the manager had talked about. But they know full well that the budget was not done at the time that they came out and made these ratings. So these are public.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll get into the, I guess, and just for those folks at home that are watching it, we're going to go through the budget discussion, what I call pretty quickly tonight, because we've been talking about the budget since June of last year. We knew that, I think, what was, what Dave talked to, we knew that we had a $2.2 million gap back in June. So we have come up with a lot of decisions as a council up to date, and I think tonight we've got one or two items to refine, and we want to start with pluses and minuses to your most active, most recent budget so that we understand what we're dealing with. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would reiterate, we've been doing this together for 10 months. There are no surprises in this budget. That doesn't mean everybody agrees with everything, but you're seeing nothing for the first time except this chart, and that's only because we only finalized it today. Typically, in a budget exercise, we do something called an add-delete. I think Teresa calls it a change list, but essentially, we want to show you what's changed since the budget went to bad. Teresa, do you have this, do you have the add-delete list file that you could put up? Okay. Do you have the other one? The line chart? Okay. All right. Fine. Members of council, you have this in your package. It's a one-pager. It says, "City of Pecosin changes in budget June 30, 2013." There have been a small number of changes. Some years, it would be a large number. But essentially, you see them here. Our initial estimates for personal property have gone up from the initial estimate of about $95,000. We've seen some reductions in our estimates for DMV revenue, bank franchise tax. We've continued to work on the budget at the regional jail and brought it down further by about $12,000. We have received updated 911 budget information from York County, about $6,600, similar for about $1,000 for animal control. Those are largely housekeeping. The last item on that list and expenditures is not housekeeping. In the final days of the budget compromise at the state, there was an item that would allow localities some time to ease their way into the rather significant new local government costs for VRS. Essentially, what this allows us to do, and it's an option, you don't have to do this. This is a, this is a choice, but we put it here, we put the choice here. We have, in the current budget, the rates that were certified for next year, fully in there. The state budget allowed localities to choose, to choose the higher of either the current year's rates or 70% of the rates that have been certified for next year, whichever was higher, as an option to 100%. When it's all said and done, years from now, we'll have to make this up. This isn't a get-out-of-jail-free card, but it is, it is a partial deferment that allows us to step, step up certainly, but not step all the way in the first year. We would still have almost $250,000 of increased local government VRS expenses, even if you choose this option. But we model it here to show you what that 70% of next year would look like, and that's important because, I'm going to show you graphically what this decision can do for you in just a moment. There are two other items before I advance. The net positive to our budget there from those things, if they're all, if they're all chosen and nothing else has changed, is $288,736,000 to the positive. What that means is, if you were to accept these items, our budget, which originally had about $805,000 of fund balance used to balance it, the number goes down because the budget nets up. And I'll show you what that means in a moment. There are two other items, one of which we're still working on. We did receive one citizen suggestion that we look at the cost savings, if there was cost savings relating to twice every other week recycling pickup. We're still working on that issue. It's taken, it's more complicated than it sounds. We'll continue to work on that, present that information to you when we get it. The other, the last item is an item that the mayor had asked us to quantify. That is the general fund cost associated with an additional 0.7% pay increase, which is the number that has been calculated regionally, perhaps statewide, as the overall break-even number for the employees with the 5-for-5 VRS requirement. We've done some work to try to understand where our employees are in terms of their take-home pay with the 5-for-5, which is in the budget, and also the health insurance increase, which is in the budget. And the results are mixed. Some employees would actually see a slight net positive when taken into account the $1,000 decision that you all made last August. Other employees would not. Their actual take-home pay would go down to some degree. Because of my salary relative to some others, I would see the largest impact. But it really ranges, and it ranges with where you are, and also because we filtered in the health insurance, what health insurance choices you make too for your family. I put that in here so that you'll know what it is and remind you that it is not in the recommended budget at present. So if you want to deal with it, that's, that's something that you'll need to give us some direction on. Teresa, do you have this chart to disseminate? I'm sorry. Was it? It may be up there. I apologize. Members of council?
It's okay.
Let's take a look.
No, maybe we won't.
I don't see it.
All right. We'll improvise. What this chart says, and I apologize that we don't have it for you, is when we started the budget, by that I mean the recommended budget, you'll recall that we had reduced the structural imbalance down in the budget, and the budget itself had all of the funds, with the exception of the general fund, were in balance, and the amount of the imbalance in the general fund had been reduced to just a little more than $800,000. And we did that through many ways, but when it came down to it, the 800, I guess it's 808,000, would be funded from our excess general fund fund balance. Excess is defined by greater than the 15% policy that you have set. The one that David talks about is, we don't want to go below. 15 is that number he's talking about, and this is money on top of that. So we, that's in the budget as recommended to you, and based on our most recent estimates of the money that we try to save throughout the year in revenue performance and forecasting the fund balance forward for next year, by that I mean fiscal year 2014, we thought that we might have somewhere in the neighborhood of $210,000 in excess fund balance remaining going into 14 now, 13 is balanced at the recommended level, to apply to that $800,000 number. And this is where the, where the other numbers come into play. If you concur with the phasing in of the VRS change, the 70% of the 2013 certified rates, and take all of the other things, with the exception of the 0.7% potential pay increase, what that does is it lowers the amount of fund balance we have to use in the current budget by about $288,000. Because we're not using 288,000, we have 288,000 more. So taking those factors, the amount of money that, if you were to approve it without change, that's just a working assumption, of course, the amount of fund balance needed for this budget would be reduced from 808,000 to 519. So we're, again, we're lowering that structural imbalance, and the amount of estimated excess fund balance we would have in 2014 is about 500,000. So it's, we've lowered the structural imbalance, and we've, we've saved sufficient money that when we start 2014, TMDL notwithstanding, we are, we are roughly in balance at the most basic of the budget level. And that's, that's a dramatic improvement over where we started, and it's a byproduct of your management over time and in our collective management with you. There's nothing but good news in that number if we choose to, that VRS option. If we don't, then the numbers change somewhat, but they, they change net by about $400,000 less. And that's where we are, Mr. Mayor. And I'll pass this around. It may make more sense in a, in graphic format.
Randy, if we do the 70% VRS for this coming year, when do we have to finish it? When do we have to go back and pay the 30%?
I'm unclear on exactly when that is, but it will, it is in the foreseeable future.
Oh, yeah.
I would say in the next three to five years.
Five-year period?
I would say in the next three to five years. I don't believe it's in the second year of the biennium. There's the chart. Oh, there we go. All right. This makes more sense.
Good scrambling.
Yeah. Good scrambling, Teresa. So, Mr. Krieger, it's not in the current biennium, but because it was a result of budget language, it'll be dealt with in the future version of the state budget.
It'll be a two-year?
It's not in the biennial budget, which was just passed, but it will likely be in the three-to-five-year timeframe, but that itself will be laid out in a future state budget document. You could choose not to do it.
No, always remember, I think, the one thing is that the state could change their mind again next year. You know, right now, it's 5-and-5. They haven't seen their second year of the biennium. I don't know how firm that law is, but I've seen them make prom, I think, Dr. Vannal, you said it best, I've seen them make promises on VRS and then go another way in the next legislative session. So it's certainly something that council should consider in the coming week, do the public hearing as we're scheduled tonight, and then some guidance to the manager on how we want to proceed with that in the coming, before we get to the final vote in about two weeks, right? That's what you're really looking for, is some discussion on that subject?
Yes. It's an important decision. Right now, our increase in the budget for VRS for the employer share, the, not the 5-for-5, but the rate increases, is just a tad under 450,000. So you'll see that this savings in terms of next year, about 208, simply is a, is a debit against that number. So we still have close to a quarter of $1 million, I'm rounding up slightly, invested in VRS rates going up. So it's not a, the state did not approve, nor, nor are we talking about something that really puts our, our head in the sand.
And that is the rates, right? I mean, to make, to make sure that we're all stay on the same page here, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I may have gotten this backwards, but the 5-and-5 is still in the budget.
That's correct.
We're talking about the rate change, not the 5-and-5.
Yes, sir.
The 5-plus-5.
That's correct.
So there's some additional allowances for the localities to, to space out 5, 5-and-5.
Yes, sir.
I think what we're saying is that we're going to take care of that issue for the employees so that we don't continue to revisit it as a council every year to try and, oh, well, we didn't do all of 5-and-5. All of the 5-plus-5 money is in the budget, and within the rates that we're talking about, which is no tax increase and all that, that's a done thing. Now we're just talking about the rates themselves and how council would like to address the votes so that there's no confusion on that issue. Does that make it, are we all on the same page?
I think so.
Okay.
Do the schools have the same option?
They do not.
If I had to venture to guess, and this is truly conjecture on my part, but the reason the schools are not in there is they could not use the city's money when they basically borrowed from VRS. This would be the state. Now, they could borrow from the, from the teachers' part of their retirement because they are shared employee between us and the state. So the city, all of our funds are intact. The schools are not intact. Therefore, the schools have to pay the money now for the economics to work. But that's conjecture.
Gene, I would like to say that I'm on the same page with you, and I'm really clear, but I'm going to be honest and say that I am not.
Okay.
And now that we have the charts up there, could you or Randy one explain that one more time for me, please?
Sure. Let me try it?
You go. I'm going to get some coffee.
The, the two bars on your left, I'll speak to that first. That is what represents the current recommended budget, the one that I presented to you several weeks ago. That budget, as you'll recall, solved almost all of the structural imbalances that we have, with the exception of the general fund. The general fund still needed $808,000 of money from the fund balance in order to maintain it at essentially status quo with a few changes. And so that's what's in the recommended budget. That left, that's the big purple line, that left an amount of $209,000 in projected continued excess fund balance that we would have available, that we could apply to the following year's budget, 2014. So what I'm saying to you there is, we've got an $800,000 gap and $200,000 identifiable. That actually is a significant improvement over where we've been, as you recall, as we've gone through this process. So those two represent the original budget.
Can I clarify one thing here? And that's above the minimum, whether we have 13 or 15%.
15.
It's above that.
Yes, ma'am. That, that is one of those critical fault lines that we never want to go below, and that's one of our strongest foundations for our credit rating. So anytime I talk about fund balance, it's always on the other side of 15%. So the first two, Mr. Southall, are the way the original budget looked, and the purpose of the second two is to show you the changes, and for the purpose of the chart, the assumption is they're all made. Obviously, that's, that's a chart assumption. They're your decisions to make. But when you take the amount of the savings from VRS, if you choose that 70% option, the increases in personal property, the reductions in jail costs and all of that, and all of that. the increases in personal property, the reductions in jail costs and all of that, it gives you in the, in the third column, working from the left, a revised amount of fund balance that would be required to fund the 2013 general fund operating budget. So, it's the end result of that 288,000 of good news. If we only take 519,000 out of the fund balance, that means that a good portion of that original 808,000 that had been projected in my budget to be used won't need to be used. It means we get to keep more money in our savings account. And the real purpose of the last two lines is to show you that, assuming for a moment that you accept the changes that are on this sheet, that as we go into 2014, you notice I, I'm already thinking the following fiscal year because of our imbalance, is that we essentially have about $500,000 of a 519,000 imbalance that would be potentially in our savings account to apply to it. What that would mean, and again, TMDL notwithstanding, we all know that's a big scary number we'll have to deal with at some point, but essentially to run the rest of the budget with no changes of any kind, we essentially have enough money in our savings to do that. To be in the fifth year of a recession and still be having that type of money available as a fire break on the other side of the 15% reserve, I think is a tantamount to, to your, it's attributed to your, to your leadership, to some degree, my leadership, a whole lot of luck, good stewardship by the school system, good relative performance by our business. I mean, everything has to happen right for this to happen, and I think that that's exactly what the folks, especially at Standards and Poor's, saw, which is, we had a recession, it hit us like it hit everybody else, we absorbed it the best we could, we mitigated the damage in terms of governmental services, and now we're planning our way out, and this is part of planning our way out. The idea that we're going to emerge from the recession while we're still in it, this is just yet another positive step in that direction. And it's one that would say that barring some sort of new complication that we're unaware in terms of pressure on our tax rate in 2014, it's not there at the base level. You all may decide there's something important that the community needs to invest in, but at least it won't be investing in our core government as we know it today. And I think that's, that's really good news. I hope I answered your question, Bud.
Yes, I, I understand it a whole lot better. Thank you very much. So, what you just talked about was more of the multi-year facet of the decision we make this year will, you know, and how to use the VRS rates as well as the other changes that are on the positive side, you know, that's, that's basically the decision that we'll have to come through between now and when we vote on this in two weeks. So, to try and card it. Now, I know that there was a discussion about, did you want to talk about?
The boat tax?
Yeah.
Yes. We recently made a proposal that we would reduce the boat tax by 10%, and I think for the city, that's a positive direction to go in. My concern is that's not sending big enough a signal to the, to the public. Pecosan's always been known as a seafaring community. And up until recently, we've, we've had very few restaurants that sit on the water where the people in Pecosan could go and have food. We now have a couple, and we opened up a brand new one here recently. We've got much improved marina facilities, and we'd like to see those marina facilities filled. It would not only help the marinas, but it would help Pecosan's image. It would bring boats and people to the city of Pecosan to use their restaurants. Hopefully, it would allow better use of our railroad facilities for boat repairs and provide more job opportunity. So, it's to that benefit all the way around to have permanent boats come in and fill the slips. And we have more yet to do. There are plans to put in water and electricity in the boat slips down at Messick Point. Just talk about fuel, that will not have ethanol alcohol in it for the boats to be used, that's supposed to come down to the Messick Point. And we want to provide some incentives to help people come to the city of Pecosan. And for those reasons, I think that we need to raise that number to at least 20%. It's my understanding that raising the, the, raising the fee from, the reduction from 10% reduction to a 20% reduction will not make a really hard, significant impact on our budget. It's something that we might be able to live with, but if it's successful and more boats do come here, we may have a positive revenue increase. And if that's the case, then we can have a work session later in the year where we can sit down and have some positive discussion to say, hey, this really worked. As a result of this, we have more permanent boats, okay? We might be able to have a bigger reduction, maybe take it to 50 or 75%, but we need to see the positive cash flow increase. If it doesn't work, then we haven't made such a drastic change in our budget that it will negatively impact the city. And so, I'm going to propose that we move that from 10% to 20%, and it will, it'll allow us to stay physically responsible, and it will deal with the comment made in, in Davenport's presentation a few minutes ago, where they said Moody's will continue to monitor the city's, the city's ability to remain in compliance with its fiscal policies. And if reserve levels fall below these targets, long-term credit length could be pressured. By doing it from 10% to 20%, that is, that is not an issue with this. It keeps us fiscally responsible, and I think it sends a better signal to the boating public, both the recreational boating public and for the waterman, that we're trying to reduce the taxes on your boats, we're trying to provide more job opportunity and, and improve the water activities in the city. And so, I propose going from 10% to 20% and a work session later to see if we can do better.
Randy, are we the highest boat tax in this vicinity? Do you know that, I'll tell you. I think we're higher than most everybody.
Yeah.
We're the only.
Yeah.
Gloucester, Hampton, just about zero.
Well, yeah.
And I, if we, if we go with this proposal, this 70% proposal, I'd like to take it a step further and say we go ahead and reduce it 50%. Because we've got two developers that are willing to make, they're, they already made substantial financial commitments in this market. And to attract boats here, if, I think we need to make a substantial statement to them that we support them. And I'd like to say that if we choose this 70% route, that we make a 50% reduction, it would only take seven $1 million boats to register here to make up $56,000 in the tax that we, and that's, that's probably about half of what we're getting now, isn't it, Graham?
Well--
On the boats?
Let's go back to the first question, because Graham passed me a note. We are not the highest. We are actually far from it. City of Suffolk is where we are, Isle of Wight is a dollar, Gloucester's a dollar, Matthews is $1.45, Middlesex is 350. James City County's four. Chesapeake and Norfolk are substantially less than us. And then the other cities are actually taking advantage of the weight restrictions that are in the code, which I think are too complicated to get into the discussion of side-by-side comparisons. But Hampton, the one that we keep talking about is, you know, they've got a, they and Virginia Beach have a very low rate even by, for pleasure use, but it doesn't really talk about what they're doing as far as their, their other stuff. But I'll tell you that we're not, I know Hampton is regretting the day that they did that with their current budget that they've got in front of them. I would say that, and we'll make, certainly make copies of that and get that around to everybody.
But most--
But each, each 10%--
A lot of those are not really in our competition area. Suffolk--
I don't consider, yeah. I don't consider Virginia Beach to be a source. But--
Forest.
But let me say that each 10% is $14,000. That's about what each 10% reduction costs. $140,000 is what we're getting. Each 10% that we reduce that is about $14,000. So, 10% is $14,000, that's what's in the budget. Second one is 28,000. So, you know, 14 times five, if you go 50, that's, that's above a six-figure number. So, just want to make sure that we--
What's the total we take in now?
You're taking out 28.
If each 10% is $14,000, and you go 50%, isn't that 70,000?
Yeah, 70,000. Yeah. But it'd have to come out of an appropriate fund balance.
I don't mind playing with 14. 70 gets a little more risk. You know, we can hire school--
But you've got, but you've got to look at what, I mean, if it doesn't work, you can always go back and change it. You've got to look at, are we going to draw some high-dollar boats that register in Pecosan?
Well, I think--
Wouldn't take many to make up that 70,000.
If we get one or two, I'd be willing to go another 10 or another 10.
I think we're incentivizing that.
I don't think you get--
It's not going to work like--
When it drops, just--
I can only tell you that we talked to the marina operators, and they were thrilled that we were considering 10. And I think they'd be twice as thrilled that we're considering 20, you know, percent reduction, because they didn't think it was in the budget at all. And they were surprised and, and pleased to hear that it was and that council was giving them the signal. And they feel like this can be a win-win. So, and I see it the same way. I think this can be a win-win. I, I agree that soon as we get a couple if, and that's a big if, if we get a couple million-dollar boats, it's going to, I, I'd see the intention of council to go to continue to drive it down till a break even and essentially--
I see the opposite. I see until you drop it by, say, 50%, you're not going to see a million-dollar boat.
Yeah, maybe not.
Once you drop it, you're going to see perhaps a million-dollar boat. If you're not, like Buddy said, put it back up there then, they're not going to come.
Where are the million-dollar boats right now? And how many of them are there that we could take a few?
Hampton and Virginia Beach. The closer you are to the ocean, the more desirable it is to have that big boat there. There are two boats right now that are owned by people in Pecosan that are worth over four and a half million dollars that would--
That would fit here?
Come here. Yes, fit here.
Would that solve--
And the same people you're talking about, Gene, did not, they weren't singing the song you're saying--
I just talked to them--
--up at Surf Rider.
I talked to them at Surf Rider the same night, so--
Has there been a commitment for the two four-and-a-half-million-dollar boats to come to Pecosan if we reduced it 50%?
Well, how do you do that? How do you get that--
That's my point. Now, I would be in favor of having it 50% or even less if we saw positive cash flow. But I don't want to, you know, the other cities that you mentioned have a, a much larger commercial base for their, for their tax revenue than the city of Pecosan does. We can't compete with Virginia Beach and the city of Hampton with their commercial tax base. The revenue we get has to come from the citizens.
And I think, I think it's well stated, basically, what we're shifting right now on a, on this risk that we're taking, and the city is taking a risk here, is we are actually shifting that risk to the residential tax base. I think Bud's point is, is well taken in that we don't have a business tax base that's appreciable yet. We're working to change that. But everything that we take out of this increases the risk to the real estate tax rate. And that's the only reason that, you know, I'm not, I don't want to be more aggressive. I want to incentivize, but not, not at the sake of passing what I, what a lot of people consider to be a luxury tax to homeowners. And I think we'd have to be careful and walk that line of where we need to be.
Yeah. Well, if you take that risk--
I think--
Not only bring high-dollar boats here, but you bring a manufacturer that sets up an office here to sell those boats, then you, you've more than paid for. And I think you've got to take that risk to try to draw that--
Well, I think we're sending the signal that we're willing to take the risk and watch it, but we're not willing to invest the bank.
Is it possible to change the tax rate for the second half of the assessment in the middle of the year?
I don't think so, but I'd defer to Graham.
No.
Cannot do that.
All right. So, consensus is, you want 50? What do you want?
20, that's good.
Frank?
I think 20, probably, to start with.
Frank?
Half.
Half? 20? Go on. 1, 2, 20. All right. So, why don't you just, as the guidance to council, and I'm sure we can talk about it in the, when we get to the night, why don't you at least draft the paper for the 20%?
Okay.
All right, anything on the, what's the consensus of council as far as giving some guidance to staff on the .7%? This is, when you look at your, your paperwork here, this is the five plus five, where the city employees would, could see a reduction based on all the things, and the break even is .7% in addition to the five plus five. The cost for the city still at 43, 756.
Yes. General fund cost.
And Randy has shown that we're going forward to do that, but no problem.
If, if we go--
No problem.
If we go the 70% route, is that correct?
If you go--
If you, if you choose this option--
Right.
--VRS--
If--
For 70%.
No.
If you, if I--
Go ahead.
If you looked just at the first two, if you made this decision and the decision was for 43,000 and whatever was $500, your blue line would go up by that much and your red line would come down. Now, in response to Mr. Green's question, if you, if you did not choose the 70% option and went with 100, then your blue line would go up by the amount of the green line. And the green, and the, and the second line would simply go down because the green line would be disappearing, meaning you would still have sufficient money if you're looking at 2013 as a single budgetary entity. This chart's really trying to show you what 2014 looks like. So, to the extent that you choose to maybe not go with a 70% option and/or any of the other things, it simply means, I'm sorry, but Mr. Green was talking specifically about the VRS 70%. Whatever you do, it will just affect the math and affect the hill we got to get over in the next year. But there is sufficient money, if you look simply at 213, to do it with or without the 70%. But you can see how that relative line changes. It's pretty, pretty close to balance now.
What do you recommend?
With respect to the VRS 70%?
No, yeah.
The point--
It's a .7 for the city.
What's the question about the .7?
Well, that's why I said, that's why I wanted to make sure we were all on the same page here, which is, it's difficult because we're all talking VRS.
Right.
But you got VRS rates, which is what's discussed up there in the green, and then you have the state mandated five plus five plan. Okay? Two different scenarios. If we give, we are planning in the budget to give the employees what is mandated by the state of the five plus five. Each employee, or the majority of employees will see their pay actually, take-home pay actually decrease. Even with a 5% raise, when they pay their money to, to VRS, they will actually see their take-home money reduced. The difference to make that up is this .7.
.7%.
That is independent of the 70% VRS changes that we're talking about. And I think what Randy's alluding to, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, is if, if we take advantage of the state's VRS schedule, then we can absorb the 43. Just depends on where you put the, but at the end of the day, it's two independent decisions, I think. If we're going to do the five plus five--
Okay.
Do you want to add in the .7 that it would make, that it would take to make the employees whole at take-home time? And then the second question is, what do you feel about the rate? The 70%?
Well, I think we should only do the .7 if we take the 70%.
I'm tired of taking this, trying to make up for the state all the time. I mean--
I think it's well stated.
But the alternative is you exacerbate what the state does to you.
Right.
I'd rather be the guy that says, hey, go ahead, state, stick it to me, but I'm going to take care of my people.
Right. And I think that's what we're saying. Do we want to take care of our people?
Now, last year, we voted a raise. Did that, was that perpetual, or was it a one-time?
In both of the last years, you've given a bonus, which in your direction was to turn that into a permanent pay adjustment the second year. So, in the current year, your first bonus was turned into a pay adjustment, and in the year we're planning towards, that's in there as well. We may find that the break-even point may be a little bit lower because of that. We were running calculations literally up till 5 o'clock today. You had asked what my recommendation is on the .7. That's a tough one, because I look, I'm looking multiple years, and I know the hills we've got to get over. And so, as we expend money out of our fund balance to raise our operating budget, it continues a habit that is really not supportable over time. Having said that, I'm never going to tell you that I recommend a reduction in the take-home pay of our employees. That's not something that I favor either.
Now, you're starting to sound like us, Randy. We're the politicians.
So, I will ask your question this way, in direct response. I think that if you choose to do that, whether it's .7, .6, .5, something more, that what I will do is work with my department heads and their managers, and we will squeeze as much money out of next year's budget by the end of the year as we put into this pay plan. We will, as you know, we have return surpluses out of the operating budget essentially every year throughout the recession. We'll just have to clamp down a little bit harder so that at the end of the year, the fund balance number would look similar. That's the best I can...
All right. Here's a, and I'm sorry, and I apologize to the public that we're not getting started, but I think that this is a good conversation to have before we get into the public hearing. How about if we wait till the end-of-the-year surplus and then do it at that point in time?
Certainly could do that.
In that way, it would be no different than the years past. If we've got the surplus money, then we proceed and roll it into next year's budget. If we don't, then we don't do that. And it doesn't affect this year's budget whatsoever.
I think that's a great suggestion.
But if we do that, Gene, will in the meantime, the employees see a decreased take-home pay?
From this year, but not from the past two years when we've given them raises, right? They're still making more money than they did two years ago.
They're making more money for sure, because the 5 for 5 means that your salary's going to go up by 5 percent, which you have to then pay the 5 percent out and then play VRS and FICA on it so you go backwards. So, in answer to your question, Mr. Southall, in the meantime, some of our employees would see their actual take-home pay go down. Not all. It's sort of a mixed bag.
Being that you've been squeezing for the last three or four years, is there any squeeze room left?
There's no structural squeeze room left, but as you know, we have vacancies from time to time. We hold on to that money. We don't use it. We try to keep it. So, I guess what I'm saying to you is that I still stand by what I said in response to your question. I also think the mayor's idea has a lot of merit, too, because it allows us to finish the year and see where we are. And when I'm talking about squeezing money, I'm not talking about the current fiscal year's budget. I'm talking about next year's budget.
So, why don't we just, why don't we just leave it at, it's an issue to resolve outside of the budget right at the end of the fiscal year, and the risk to the employees is probably one to two months of salary. I mean, one to two months paycheck reduction. But I, so far, I've seen council step up to the plate when it comes to the employees based on the end-of-the-year's money.
I don't want to see them lose money.
Yeah.
I don't want them to lose money.
So, are you willing to wait till the end of the year, or you want to roll it into the budget right now? That's the question.
Well, you know...
The end of the year and the budget, just so you know, we're there pretty close. Gene?
What if we just tie it to that 70 percent rule? If you do the 70 percent rule, we're going to do the 7 tenths of breaks.
Fair enough.
Paid for.
That suits me. And that way, no one sees the reduction in the, well, maybe a few, but the majority will not see the reduction. There's some people out there really can't afford to have it reduced.
I agree with that.
And, yeah, we could fix it at the end of the year, but in the meantime, they really struggle.
All right. So, we'll tie it to, does anybody have any problem tying it to the equal of the VRS changes, the rate changes?
I have a question. I'll throw another wrench in there. Does it have to be flat across the board? Could it be judicious so that nobody actually loses take-home pay and apply it that way only? Is that doable? I know it's complicated.
Is Robin still sitting upright?
Do you want to hit me?
I swore.
Shall I duck?
Got a bad headache.
Ms. Crawford, I believe that it is technically calculable. That would require some pretty detailed calculations on all of our folks, and it is complicated by the fact that people have different insurance choices that they make. Some people have no coverage. Some people have family coverage of different type or the other. So, there becomes lots of variables, because when we say take-home pay, we're also lumping in the increased cost of health insurance. We're sort of adding two things. It is calculable. We may have to pay for special mental health therapy for Robin, but...
Well, which insurance plan is she on?
York County, I think.
Oh, okay. But... For $43,000, I'm not sure that we're not arguing over nickels, even though it sounds, it's a tremendous amount of money. When you spread it over the number of employees, we're really not talking about a lot. We're talking about .7 percent. So, why don't we just do what Buddy had suggested, and I'm seeing a lot of head nod about tie it to the VRS changes and draw it up that way.
So, tie those two together, model the 20 percent boat tax reduction, and bring that resolution back to you.
Yes, sir.
And then, of course, if there's any further direction following your public hearing, we'd be pleased to receive that as well.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Let's see how quickly we can move into a regular session.